Yeah, we're, I don't know, maybe we're two that are just now, I'm free, right?
He is, he is, he is good at what he does.
I've got six thirty-two, time to start the meeting.
Think our forum is gonna be a little short tonight with all the speakers out there. Yep, so let's start off the meeting with a moment of silence. Amen. Commissioners, you've seen the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented? I have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Alexander. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes carry. The floor is now open for public comment.
Jane Norris, one ninety-two Mississippi Road. I wanted to give you all a brief update on the status of the Pigeon River Fund grant proposal for Flat Creek Crossing, which we submitted for thirty-four thousand, telling them that if we got that money, we would be able to complete work above the trail and below the trail, but not the trail itself. Their decisions are not made yet, but we have had three communications from the program officer. One suggesting that we add some introduction of the people who were bringing the proposal. So, but don't, don't spend any extra effort on it, you know, if you have something, well, of course, we have something. So, within three days, we submitted it after quite a bit of work. And we have also, we've had multiple communications attempting to set up a site visit. The site visit didn't happen. There were too many people to wrangle, too many conflicts. But the fact that the site visit was about to happen got us thinking about what would we tell them, what would we show them? And so, I said, I wish I had submitted more pictures. And the program officer said, well, if you get them in right away, I'll add them to the application. So, they have a series of eight photos, I think, on four pages with captions explaining what they're looking at with marks on the photos to show where the features that we're proposing to build will be. And the program officer wrote back and said, why, thank you very much. That answered a lot of my questions. So, we have no guarantee that we're getting this, but it kind of feels nice.
How much is it, Jane, like two hundred?
Thirty-four thousand, sixty-five dollars. That with what we already have on hand raised would be just enough, so far as we can tell, to do the work above and below the bank. And then, we'd wait on the trail until we have additional funding. Do you have any other grants and works? We are very seriously considering one more, which would be larger. And we're talking with Savannah about that. It, because it's a larger grant, it involves a little bit of effort from the town that we're not able to do just by ourselves.
Thank you, Jane, and thank your committee for all the work they're doing on that. Anyone else? Folks, while we got the time, I'd like for us to consider the hours that we're doing the forum, because we usually end up spending fifteen minutes talking to ourselves, or even longer sometimes. And we should, if staff would submit some thoughts or some ideas. Commissioners, your thoughts and ideas on, on what we need to do. I don't mind sitting here for thirty minutes and so forth, but it seems like sometimes it's a waste of time. So, be thinking about that. Anybody else stand? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn until seven o'clock. I have a motion from Commissioner Widmer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mayor Pro Tim Blake. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes carry. The staff informs me it's seven o'clock, time to start the meeting. If we would all stand and face the flag and read together the pledge of allegiance. the same one nation, we are, unanimous, liberty and justice for all, founded just among the persons. We've lost this week, Margaret Mead, and Henry D. Stanley, Pitt Gray, and Lyra, and then the colony's other school.
Parker.
I found Parker.
Commissioners, you have received the agenda and have had a chance to look it over. You'll have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Whoops, one change. Under my communications, I am going to... What am I going to introduce?
You are adding a proclamation for Arbor Day.
Arbor, yeah.
I'm so sorry. A proclamation for Arbor Day.
Arbor Day, okay. Other than that, everything is as presented. Do I have a motion to adopt? Have a motion from Commissioner Fouché. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem Blake. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry. Savannah, you want to cover the consent agenda and also your communications?
Sure. So on consent agenda, we have the March 14th public forum meeting minutes, the March 14th town council meeting minutes, and the March 22nd special meeting minutes. That's the budget workshop, and that is all on consent agenda. For my communications, I don't have too much. Yesterday, Olivia Presley took the oath of office for our police department, so she's sworn in. She should be starting sometime right around mid-May. She's on maternity leave right now. And then also just a reminder about the new utility customer service portal on our website. You can auto-pay your water bills, enroll in e-bills, so that you are going paperless, and you can also view transaction and consumption history. So there are little... There's a QR code at Angie's desk that you can scan, or that's on the homepage of our website.
I attended Monday on the first of April, the North Carolina Board of Transportation meeting that was held in Asheville, North Carolina. It was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, and of course, I got to speak to Representative Eric Agar again there. And William Clark, the Division 13, which is our area, hosted that meeting. Also, on the third Wednesday, I went to the Town and State Dinner, met in Hickory. Again, I spoke to Representative Agar on several things that pertained to Montrite. I've done my duty and eaten enough rubber chicken this week to last me a while, so moving on. Commissioners, you have received administrative reports from the administration, planning and zoning, the police department, public works and water sanitation, streets, finance, and March building permit information. Any questions of any of the staff on any of those? Tom?
I've just got a question for Savannah on her town manager's communications. You said that... Her name is Olivia Presley?
Yes.
Is that two S's or one S?
Two S's.
Two S's in Presley. And why would she take the oath of office now if she doesn't start until mid-May?
Right. So she has to be a sworn officer to get her fingerprints done and finish the paperwork with the state. So that's just to streamline the process to get her started as soon as she's ready to come back.
Okay. So she's not on her payroll right now?
Right. Right. That will start when she actually comes on shift.
Okay. Gotcha. And for you, Mr. Mayor, the transportation meeting, what was...
Yes, sir. The State Board of Transportation meets several times a year, and they happen to choose the Asheville area to meet this time.
Gotcha.
And it's just they carry on their normal meeting. There was the announcement, Carrigan's already announced it in the paper though, that the Black Mountain, the new Black Mountain exit on Blue Ridge Road has been approved and so forth, so you know, it'll move on. Maybe that'll cut down on some of the traffic through Black Mountain, I don't know.
Not for the next three years.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Floor's open for any public comment.
I'm Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland Place, and I've come back and I'm repeating things I've said before, but my comments relate to budget preparation, which I know you all are doing. I've been where you are, so I understand all the challenges, and I appreciate the ones that I'm having in Black Mountain. I'm very much in support of having a living wage being paid for our staff. When I was on this council, I was the one who brought in for a public presentation representatives from Just Economics, and at that time, we voted that we would be a living wage employer. So I urge you to be sure that we bring up to a living wage all of the employees who might not meet that at this time. We did make that commitment, and it's very important that we pay our staff so they don't have to go get food from the Christian ministry on their way home because they need more money or have a second or third job. So I support that, and I also support a cost of living raise so that we keep... The few employees that we have are experienced, they're trained, they're very dedicated, and they are our biggest resource. So I think it's a... You know, your budget is a moral statement, and I think here, especially in Montrite, we need to put our people first. So thank you. One addition, another person who has died was Don Woods, Dr. Don Woods. He was a member of the town council at one time. His doctorate was actually in computer science, but he was a missionary in the Gobi Desert in Mongolia much of his life, a big tennis player. Anyway, we can remember him because his service is coming up... I don't know what date. Do any of y'all know the date? Anyway, this month, I think. It's later this month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Any other comments? Public comments? Floor's still open. Seeing no one moving toward the microphone, we'll move on. Under old business... New business, don't we?
New business.
Okay.
That's old business.
Proposal for legal services. Savannah, you gonna take care of that? You and Mason?
Sure. So, like we spoke about briefly last month, we have a proposal from Allen Stoll Kilborn to provide legal services. The proposal's in your packet. They are proposing a flat monthly fee of $2,500 a month. Mayor Pro Tem Blake and I met with Mr. Allen yesterday, and he agreed to cover Board of Adjustment meetings along with the Board of Commissioner meetings. So I think that that's great and will be very helpful to our Board of Adjustment, especially as they consider variances, which we have more than a typical town would. So Derek Allen is here to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm happy to address them as well.
Mason, do you want to add anything to that presentation?
Well, we'll let Derek introduce himself and his firm, but I do think they've made a fair fair proposal to us, and Derek agreed to, with some minor changes, some alternative language I proposed to the scope of services, which didn't change the intent of their language, but made it a lot more explicit, with the exception of the Board of Adjustment, which is imperative. And just so members of the public know, our Board of Adjustment, the way North Carolina law is set up, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission makes recommendations to the town council, and we... As a general rule, and we simply... We approve, and so there's a check at the town council level before rights are impacted by the decisions of that board. But the Board of Adjustment is a different thing. We don't... They don't make recommendations to us. They make final decisions, and those final decisions aren't, in cases of variances, aren't appealable to us, they're appealable directly to court. The only protection we have between... To help those matters not go to court is a very good zoning administrator, which we have, but now. But it would be much better protection to also have active involvement of council. And I'll let Derek explain, they've got some expertise in-house on that in particular, and we thank them for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Derek Allen. I've got a law firm, Allen Stoll and Kilborn, that we started almost five years ago. We started with six attorneys, I think we have 18 now, so that would be an amendment to the letter I'd sent in. I'm a product of big firms practicing in Greensboro and then starting a office for a big firm in the Asheville area and then moved on, but as part of our core area of our practice, it's always been in local government, land use in particular, and so I met Brandon Freeman, who's recently joined our firm. Brandon would also be a supplement to the materials that we had put in, and it will be of particular interest, I think, to this body, Brandon's specific experience. I met Brandon because he was the Assistant County Attorney for Buncombe County, and as part of his job duties as Assistant County Attorney for Buncombe County, he was in charge of providing legal services to the Board of Adjustment. My firm appears in front of the Board of Adjustment at Buncombe County and just about all the other places in and around Asheville every month, and so I was on the other side of the table from Brandon for years. And we got to get a nice working relationship, it's kind of the coyote and the sheepdog going back and forth. I respected what he did, and he respected at least how I did it, and we would come to agreement sometimes and sometimes not, but we always did it professionally. What I've found with Brandon is that he knew what he was doing, and he was practical and consistent in his enforcement. When I would tell him that his Board of Adjustment members needed to be retrained, he understood what I was saying is that they were messing up the process but not understanding how things were supposed to work according to the law. And that's problematic because even when you would like to, as a body, see it go through, if it's not done in a correct way, then it's subject to appeal. And so Brandon is an expert in that area and someone that I respect, and since we had put this proposal together, he's now joined our firm. So it only took me four years to get him to come over, but he's now with us. It's a big part of our practice in terms of practicing in front of local bodies. We represent this town already on a specific litigation matter. We've enjoyed working with Savannah. It's been great. I think we've got a nice working relationship, a good rapport. What we've tried to do with the scope of services is provide those things that you would need for your regular council, and those things that you need for your regular council are included in that flat fee price. When it was suggested that we make it more explicit, all the things that were suggested to make it more explicit were certainly in our minds and in the theme of what we were trying to provide. We don't want to include things that are extraordinary, litigation, extensive redrafts of ordinances, appeals of things. We didn't want to include those, but we did want to make sure that we include in the things that are part of running a town. One of those that was identified was the specific duty to Board of Adjustment. That's fine. The only caveat that we put in, in the suggested scope of services changes that you provided, were to carve out if there's ever a break in the Board of Adjustment's position and the town's position. Legally speaking, they can be different, and so we've put in a provision that allows us to only represent the town. If there's a conflict, we assume that's what the town would want. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you have of me or Brandon or about our firm.
Questions? Tom?
Thanks for coming tonight, Derek.
Thank you for having us.
And thank you for the work that you've done for us up to this point. Over and above the retainer, the monthly retainer, do you anticipate, just based on what you know has happened here and in a typical municipality, that there would be additional fees outside of the retainer's scope of services? And if so, what would you estimate that to be?
That's a lot like asking how much do groceries cost, so I'll try to give some examples to answer the question. I don't know if you guys are going to get sued, you're in a better position to know that. That would be an extraordinary event, and once that happens, we could put together a litigation budget on the front side so you could see what it is. In our proposal, if I didn't make this part clear, we have discounted rates and a cap on an hourly rate, so even if you find that position, there's a benefit to having us as your captive counsel. That's a pretty substantial discount on that, and I can provide those sheets to you. The other pieces that would be outside of the scope would be something like an ordinance rewrite or a section of the ordinance rewrite. With something like that, I can give you a real good budget, once you tell us what the scope is going to be, you want to do something that's going to address, drive-throughs, short-term rentals, whatever it might be, we can come up with a budget that makes some sense and see if that's something that you want us to undertake.
But just advising us on ordinance issues, not asking you to rewrite the ordinance, that's included in the retainer?
It is. That's part of running the town. Those things that are part of running the town are going to be included, and I'm happy to answer any specific examples you have.
Have we established the line of communication between the town and the firm?
It's not set forth in the letter yet.
Is it?
No, there's nothing specific in the letter.
Well, we've had cases in the past where multiple people would call the attorney, and I don't want it to be an overload, I want it to be thought out.
We need a more specific procedure.
And I'll leave that to you folks to decide. For us, myself and Bo Carpenter would be the two that you would call with any kind of question, and then we would direct it if it wasn't in our field of expertise, we would direct it to the appropriate attorney.
Okay. Savannah, would you release that then?
I will, yes.
Set up something? Okay.
And what we will do is, probably the right order of operations here is to vote on the proposal pending execution of an engagement agreement, and we would set that out in even more detail than what we've done here, and then you could run that back by the town.
I don't suppose Savannah would know. Do you know about how much we spend per year typically? I mean, the last couple of years are not typical, so...
So, of course, the last two years were outliers. We're looking at, you know, over $60,000 for '21, '22, and '22 and '23. In fiscal year 2021, we spent just over $40,000, $42,000 we spent on legal fees. In 2019, fiscal year 2019, 2020, we spent $32,000 on legal fees.
Thanks.
Sure.
Let me make a point to that. All those legal fees, though, not having attorneys attend our meetings, and what's important to understand is this includes essentially 24 meetings, and I figured it up, and depending on whether they're even not billing all their travel time, that's 10 to... Depending on... You know, that's $10,000 to $15,000 of that $30,000 of those 24 meetings. That's what it cost us. But you need to look at that as insurance. That's... And as I said, particularly with the Board of Adjustment, it's our only line of defense. We've got attorneys serving on planning and zoning. You know, we sort of know when we need to call on people here, but where we can get in a ditch really quick, not know it until it's too late, is Board of Adjustment, and we've got some great people on Board of Adjustment. It's just like Derek said, it's so counterintuitive. It is so difficult. Nobody... You can even be experienced, even an experienced attorney can get turned around with the law and the unusual nature of quasi-judicial proceedings, the variance law, and the whole milieu. So it's, you know, it's just really good insurance. Frankly, $10,000 to $15,000 is, I think, a reasonable amount to pay for insurance to protect us from those litigations, because one lawsuit and that $15,000 seems cheap.
I completely agree. My assessment and my experience is that this proposal is not only very fair, but comprehensive, and I'm very happy with it.
Thanks for having those figures.
Any other questions, Derek? Hearing none, I'll do what?
Do you have a discussion? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, it's kind of like, for me, it's kind of like when you buy your first house, you get all nervous and jerky about making that kind of a commitment. We've never been on a retainer basis before. And I understand exactly what Mason's talking about, and that it is good insurance. But what echoes in my head is what Savannah told us at the budget meeting, and that is that we can be assured that, number one, our income is not going to go up in the next fiscal year, and number two, that our expenses are. So what that means is that, the one number she didn't give you was what we've spent so far this year, and if you annualize that over 12 months instead of just the nine months, it's about 28, 9. So about $30,000, close to what we would be with a retainer, with no representation at meetings. So that's my only concern. I hear you, but it's going to have to come from somewhere, whether it comes from staff salaries, or from capital projects, or, we just don't have a lot of fat in our budget. In fact, we don't have any fat in our budget. And there's, you know, there's two ways you do it. Either increase income, or you decrease expenses. And we can't increase income.
Is, I may be misunderstanding this. Is this replacing our council that we have? So that 2,500 a month would be 30,000 a year, and we're already spending that. So I don't see it as an extra expense, because we've been spending, as she said, 42, 32.
Okay.
And we're going to 30.
You're right. I mean, we got 30,500 covered, but that's why I ask Derek, what other kinds of things would be outside of the scope that a municipality like ours would normally see? And that's all add-on on top, and we can't know that. But, you know, as soon as we go over 30,500, you know, the meter is on for whatever, whatever we do. And I'm sure that we're going to have some things outside of the scope of services that we'll have to pay for in some way, outside of the retainer.
I think that having some representation at the Board of Adjustment is a good thing. We've gotten in trouble by not having that. So that's an investment we need to keep. I'm not so sure that we need it at this meeting. We've got our in-house lawyer, for now, but am I wrong that I haven't seen too many meetings where we actually need legal advice during the meeting? We usually get it before we get to the meeting.
My experience is you usually don't know you need legal advice until it's already happened.
Or you've already stepped in it.
And that's, that's the advantage of having an attorney present. And I was, when I was mayor and on-town council in Bessemer City, North Carolina, we always had an attorney there. And it, and it's as simple as when the, everybody gotten up in arms about praying at a meeting, and my attorney pulls me off to the side and says, "We're really better off just having a moment of silence." So I've stuck with that a long time, even though I say amen at the end. There are just things that you, you've got to stay on top of, and an attorney at the meeting and so forth is some of the best guidance and direction I've ever had. That's why, and it's probably, a lot of the expense at the Board of Adjustment meeting was because I really insisted at that time that we have an attorney at the Board of Adjustment meeting, because I'd already been through it before. I'd already been to arbitration one time before. And all of our problems have arisen, the financial problems in this town, most of them have arisen out of decisions made at the Board of Adjustment, or poor decisions made by planning and zoning people, or bad decisions, or inappropriate decisions. I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. But it's just, you've got to have the guidance to know exactly what you're going to do, because once it's done, there's no taking it back. I had one, I told Tom, I would tell Mason a few minutes ago, years ago, this went all the way to Supreme Court. The wisdom of the then-mayor in another town said to the planning, to the Recreation Commission, "I want you to interview this client, this applicant, these applicants, period, for the Recreation Department." So, a bunch of good old boys, I sat in. I was in HR work at the time. I did not chair the meeting, did not have a vote, but I sat in. And I heard one of the good old fellows ask the lady applicant, "How is your husband going to feel with you working these long hours at night?" They never asked the man that. And guess who won that case in the Supreme Court? The lady did. That, once it's out of the bag, it's done. No taking it back, no saying I'm sorry. So that's, that's my feeling. I just, I like having counsel available. Do I hear a motion?
Well, I want to, you know, I'd like to move that we approve in concept this agreement to try to accommodate Tom's concern. We're working on our budget right now, bring it back for final approval next month, see if we're comfortable we can get it in the budget. I don't know that Tom helps you at all, but at least we can, we're going to be a month further down the road in terms of putting our numbers. We'll never have a cap that we know what we're going to have for legal. But, I mean, I think what we do know is, whatever we spend next year, probably all we're going to spend with this proposal is somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 more, whatever that number is. And so it's where we find that $10,000 or $15,000. We're going to have to spend that other money anyway. We get in a lawsuit. So that's sort of the increment, that's the insurance premium I'm talking about. And, you know, I think we can work out the final details, get this thing ready to sign and note this time next month whether we can find that $10,000 or $15,000. And that's just my, I'll make that motion.
Repeat that motion, so Angie has it now.
We move approval of the proposed agreement with the ASK Law Firm, subject to our agreement on the final text of the representation letter and exhibits, and subject to the commission being satisfied at the next meeting, that the cost of the annual, the legal cost we anticipate in next year's budget, the budget for next year's budget are acceptable.
You got that, Angie? Does the commissioners understand the motion? By your silence, I take it that you do. So all those in favor, let me get a second on the motion first. Second?
My second.
Second from Commissioner Alexander. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes, carry. You guys can go home unless you want to stay here and watch us make sausage.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
I'll do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good.
Under new business utility building, building policy and procedure, this is for discussion only, no action to be taken tonight. Savannah?
Yes, this is, like the mayor just said, this is for discussion only. And really, what I wanted to do was give, give our residents time to look at some of the changes, or not the changes, but to look at this new policy that we're trying to put in place. If you look through it, it's very obvious, it's a draft, there are questions we need to answer, changes that still need to be made. But what I'm asking for is that, if the commissioners could please look over what we do have, send in your thoughts. But really, I wanted the draft to also be available to the public, so that if there are questions or concerns, that they could contact me before, before this gets adopted.
You know, I can't see the public reading all of this. Is there a way you can summarize it to them, changes?
So really, we don't, we don't have a policy like this in place right now. So really, all this is new.
Your bill, we're cutting your water off.
Yeah. So essentially, it's, you have to pay your bill, we'll provide you water. It's a little bit more nuanced than that, but it's standard practice to have something like this in place, and we just don't right now. So it's, it's really to protect us and the citizen. If there's a disagreement over, you know, any type of water situation, they should cover it and give us the roadmap of how to handle it.
But it does make clear that if, if people don't pay, here's, here's, here's what your grace period is going to be. It makes clear that if you try to mess with your meter, or you try to run water around your meter, we're going to take whatever steps we say we are in the policy.
Right.
And we'll have to decide what that is, but it gives everybody fair notice, here's, here's how we're running the show.
And there will be some, some things added to the fee schedule out of this, like a meter tampering fee. One other thing, I can't remember off the top of my head, but yeah, if any member of the public has a specific question about it, or a general question about it, I'm happy to answer it.
Yeah. I think we just presented that this is in place because it wasn't done before.
Right.
Just so people don't get excited and think something big's happening.
No, it's, it's nothing, it's nothing exciting. This is all standard, run-of-the-mill utility billing policy. We just don't have one right now.
Good, thank you. Nothing.
One thing that I just bring to your attention, and I haven't gone through it completely, but I did notice that on page nine, under the billing procedures, what you've got here is not consistent with our current practices. Items under B, A, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay. So this, a lot of the work on this policy has been done by Rachel, and I know that Debbie has also looked over it, but I will make sure that they check that specifically to make sure that it is how they want to do things.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Savannah, the next item is Earth Day proclamation.
What do we do for proclamations? Do we read them? Is that standing? Okay. So do I read them, or do you read them?
You're fine reading it.
Yes, this is my first. Seven months in. So this is proclamation 24-04-0001, Declaration of Earth Day in Montreat. The following proclamation is hereby issued by the mayor of the town of Montreat, whereas Earth Day was first observed on April 22, 1970, when 20 million Americans joined in events across the country to show support for a healthy, sustainable environment. And whereas by the end of 1970, the Environmental Protection Agency was born, and with that, the Clean Air Act, Clean Water Act, and the Endangered Species Act, the U.S. Cornerstones of Environmental Protections. And whereas Earth Day provides a forum to voice concerns about environmental issues like reducing waste, climate change, and clean energy, and take personal action to create change to improve the environment. Now, therefore, the mayor and the town council of the town of Montreat do hereby proclaim April 22, 2024, as Earth Day in the town of Montreat, and urge all persons to celebrate Earth Day by supporting efforts that protect our environment, and urge all persons to be advocates and good stewards of our environment on Earth Day and every day.
Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation as presented? I have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Widmer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Savannah, you want to read the next one?
Yes, so I'll, I'll actually do the Arbor Day proclamation next.
I've got it.
Okay.
I'm going to read it.
Okay, perfect.
Give you a break.
Great. So next I have the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week proclamation, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels. And whereas clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality in rendering equal service to all, whereas clerks serve as the information center on the functions of local government and community, whereas Angela Murphy serves as Montreat's town clerk and continually strives to offer the best possible service, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, the mayor of the town of Montreat recognizes this week, the week of May 5 through May 11, 2024, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Angela Murphy, and all of the clerks for the vital services they perform and the exemplary, exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you, Angie.
Do we have anybody like that?
And a fun fact is that the town clerk is the only, the only position that a local government is mandated by law to have. So Angie is the most important person in this town.
Amen.
Yes.
You already knew that.
Now, I know Public Works, the Public Works Department is a little upset that they did not get a proclamation. And Barry, I'm sorry, but you've got to come up with something for us to be able to deliver.
And then Rachel has.
Do I have a motion to approve the Municipal Clerk Week proclamation?
So moved.
Have a. Mayor Pro Tem Blake has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Almost died from lack of a second there, Angie. Commissioner Fouchet made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't hear any, did you? Okay. I've got the Arbor Day, designating Saturday, May the 4, 2024, as Arbor Day in Montreat. Whereas early residents of Montreat Cove recognize the beauty and importance of the natural environment and endeavor to protect and enhance our forests, and whereas we, as members of the Arbor Day Foundation, join the thousands of communities across the nation in celebrating trees and Tree City USA, and as members of the Arbor Day Foundation, and whereas we are joined by our neighboring town, Black Mountain, in recognizing particular trees, treasured trees, and whereas the community of Montreat, North Carolina continues to give priority to its commitment to plant trees as needed and to maintain a healthy forest. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Montreat Board of Commissioners hereby designate Saturday, May the 4, 2024, as Arbor Day in the town of Montreat, and urges all citizens to, citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by celebrating treasured trees in the community, promoting the continuing care of and conscientious management of the forest treatment of endangered trees, where possible, restoration of species that are threatened or have been lost, and planting new trees as needed. Adopted this 11th day of April, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Have a motion for the proclamation to be accepted for Arbor Day, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Widmer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Floor is open for any public comment. Floor is open for any public comment.
Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland Place. I come to you as among the residents on Maryland Place to continue to express our concern about a construction in process on our street. I can't remember how long the house has been under construction. But we are concerned for a number of reasons. One is, today was another great example. Mud runs off of a very steep, unpaved driveway down the street. It goes into neighboring homes below or to their property and on into the creek. And we've mentioned this, and I know at one time, the builder put up, he put more gravel down, which it just washes away. And he put up a silt fence, which is all in a mess. If he knows he's not going to be there, which happens for weeks at a time, he could just put up some straw and a silt fence and protect our environment and homes down below. We know that construction has been intermittent to the point where the owner of the property has put up a camera on the property to just see if anybody's there working. And that's most unfortunate. Now, I've been in the position of building a house here. Some others of you have too. You know that it never goes as fast as you want and all that. But this is literally days and weeks with nobody working there. They have no dumpster at the site. So any kind of trash left by anybody working just collects in the neighborhood. Even the wrappers from roofing shingles and things like that. Another problem that happened was that a workman opened his truck and a tire rolled out, went down and damaged a house across the street. A truck tire would be a very dangerous thing if somebody had been outside that house at that time. So I know you've heard from people, and we've sent pictures and so forth. But I want to just express continued concerns over that property, over that builder. I'm sure it's, you know, they work at strange times. Maybe the construction people are parts of a group that are working on another house, and they just come here on the weekend or something. But we're very concerned about that. The owner is out of town. So I think it's on that person's behalf, too, that we ask for some additional oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else? Think no one? Commissioners' communication?
I want to say something. I've tried to be patient with signs that, for two years now, have no meaning because there's nothing anybody can do in town to change the situation with the lodge. And now that it's gone to Raleigh, there's absolutely nothing we can do or anybody can do here. So I would like to go on record as just requesting that people take down the faded red ribbons that are now pink and the signs that are littering our yards. And it's embarrassing when people come back and say, what is happening? Are these signs still here? This is the third year that we've had to look at those signs. And I would love to see people take them down voluntarily just to beautify our town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Think no, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn just as soon as I get the dates to remember, Red. Member Board Adjustments, Board Training, April 17 at 11:00 a.m. in Town Hall. Bear Wise, Montrie Presbyterian Church. Know your three Bs, three B bears, behavior and biology, with Ashley Hobbs, Wednesday, April 17 at 4:00 p.m. in Town Hall. Refreshments at 3:45. Tree Board, Tuesday, April the 23rd at 9:30 a.m. in Town Hall. Zoom options are available. Hillside Development Ordinance Subcommittee, April the 24th at 9:00 a.m., Town Hall. Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday, April the 25th, 10:30, Town Hall. Zoom options available. Board of Adjustment, Thursday, April 25th, 5:00 p.m., Town Hall. Zoom options available. Land Care, Wednesday, May the 1st, 9:00 a.m. in Town Hall with Zoom options. Native Plant Sale and Arbor Day Celebration, May the 4th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Moore Center Field. May Town Council Meeting is Thursday, May the 9th at 7:00 p.m. Public Forum beginning at 6:30 with Zoom options. Open Space Conservation Committee Meeting, Tuesday, May the 14th, 3:30 p.m. in Town Hall. Tree Board, Tuesday, May the 28th at 9:30 a.m. in Town Hall with Zoom options. Do I entertain a motion to adjourn? Have a motion from Commissioner Widmer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem Blake. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.